Good evening all, welcome to Herbeunified School District Board of Education Meeting. Today is Monday, June 8th, and the current time is 6:10 PM. If we can start with roll call please.
President Ortega.
Present.
Trustee Bradford.
Present.
Trustee Char.
Present.
Trustee Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Regal.
Present.
Roll call staff advisors. Elliot Duchan.
Present.
Paula Ford.
This is Ford is muted. There you go.
Present.
Trent Hanson.
Present.
Dave Dubraski.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Thank you. And we will begin our meeting with first a moment of silence for three individuals in our district. First, we'll start with a moment of silence for George Koffer, former district employee. And on behalf of the board, we would like to hold a moment of silence for a former employee who passed away on April 20th. Mr. Koffer was a campus supervisor at Rubito High School from the years 1986 to 1990. The board would like to express their condolences to the Koffer family. As well, we would like to extend a moment of silence and our condolences to for Robin Fletcher, district employee who passed away on May 23rd. Mrs. Fletcher was a healthcare aide at Stone Avenue Elementary since August 2019. However, she spent years as a parent volunteer and PTO member at the site. The board again would like to extend and express their condolences to the Fletcher family. And also, one of our students, Isabel Gonzalez, that's West Riverside Elementary. We would like to hold a moment of silence for Isabel Gonzalez, incoming fourth grade student at West Riverside Elementary, who passed away on June 2nd. Isabel's parents are also teachers at West Riverside Elementary School. The board again would like to express their condolences to the Gonzalez family. We will take 10 seconds in silence. Thank you. Thank you all for holding that moment of silence. We would, I would like to share an inspirational comment this evening because of the times that we are living in right now. I heard a comment that, you know, a lot of people are canceling, or if there's an option to cancel 2020, the year 2020. But I heard of a quote that, you know, it's talking about something completely different, not to cancel. And it goes like this, "What if 2020 isn't canceled? What if 2020 is the year we have waited for? A year so uncomfortable, so painful, so scary, so raw, that it forces us to grow? A year we finally accept the need for change, declare change, work for change, become the change? A year we finally band together instead of pushing each other further apart? 2020 isn't canceled, but rather the most important year of them all." And that's by Leslie, well, I think it is. And again, thank you all for joining us this evening and this year. We will move on with reports from closed session.
Yes, thank you, President Ortega. In closed session this evening, by unanimous vote, with five voting in favor and unopposed, the board voted to approve a settlement agreement with employee number 030791. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1A, Mr. Dubraski.
Thank you. The State Department of Education recently notified us that funding for the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant has been awarded in the amount of $521,483.
Thank you, congratulations. We'll move forward with item one, I mean two board comments, and we'll start with trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Ortega. David, I want to congratulate your team for being able to be awarded the grant for the CTE programs and glad that we're still seeing some funding coming through. And I also wanted to mention or bring up, the graduations last week were absolutely impressive. I did hit up a couple of schools and helped out or handed out diplomas, but the effort between the staff and the educators and the principals to stand in the hot sun of all weeks, that it's, you know, warm weather, we hit the spike at 98 degrees, and they're standing there in the sun for each student to take the time and congratulate them and shake their hand and offer them their diploma. So it was a great experience and, and Sylvia, that was a great inspirational comment, but really appreciate that. You're pointing that out, that it is a very different year and it is a great year, but the effort for all of us to come together and work as a group has just been emotionally touching for that we are trying to make sure that we're finding the best for our students. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, I totally agree. Thank you. And we'll move on with trustee Garcia.
Thank you, President Ortega. Just have a couple of things to say. And I'd like to echo the comments of my colleague, trustee Regal, with the graduations. Phenomenal job, and please make sure you thank all the staff, all the principals for a great job and the folks that set up the graduations. Great job overall. And I think, you know, right now, this is a very difficult and challenging time with the budget, and I want to thank all the administration, everyone who's been involved with their efforts. And, you know, there's a lot of mitigating all these different challenges and keeping the district solvent. And I want to send a special thanks to everyone involved with that. And finally, I just wanted to mention, you know, we've been having Saturday morning meetings with Riverside County School Board members. And this Saturday, we have Kevin Gordon, who's president of Capital Advisors Group. So hope you can join us. He sent us a little comment, because we're going to send an invitation out later tonight. And this is kind of how the invitation is going to sound. It's going to, what he sent us is this. "The stakes cannot be higher for K-12 funding in the state budget process this year. On Saturday, June 13th, we will provide the latest forecast of the outcome we expect for public schools across California. Both houses of the California legislative leadership have rejected the governor's proposed historic cuts to K-12 schools, setting up the potential for the most significant differences between a major vision of the budget and a final budget act in decades. It will either be a horrible budget or one of, or one most districts can survive. So hope you can all join us this Saturday. And the final budget, I think, is going to be released next week sometime by, you know, Constitution. So we'll get a little bit advanced, you know, advanced notice, I guess, of what the budget's going to look like. And so these are challenging times, and I appreciate all my colleagues and their work through these difficult times. So, thank you."
Thank you. We'll move on with trustee Char.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ortega. I just wanted to, sorry. I wanted to comment on our moment of silence on Mr. George Koffer. He was an employee of the district, but he also was my mailman for several years before he retired and joined the school district as a campus supervisor. And his wife was in the office as a secretary when I was going to Rubito High School, his wife Xena. And when I was in elementary school, his father was my bus driver when I rode the bus. So he's been around for a long time, and I've known him personally for several years, and he will be missed by a lot of people. Robin Fletcher, I do not know, and I'm very sad to hear about one of our students and their parents. My condolences go out to all three of the families for those people. It's getting tough when we have things like that to start a meeting off. Thank you for your inspirational comment, President Ortega. With everything that's going on this year, it just seems like we're just in for more later in the year. I cannot imagine what, but that at least gives us some forethought as to what's going to happen throughout the next, the rest of this year. And Mr. Dubraski, congratulations on our CTE program. We all support that heavily and so glad to see that money is still going to be coming in. And the graduations, I drove through on the pre-graduation when they were turning in their books and their other things, picking up their bags and their signs. And I drove around the district seeing a lot of the signs that were out. And when we had the honking days where everybody honked their horn the day that the students were graduating, the classes were graduating in my neighborhood, I heard several. And I know some people had to go that lived in our neighborhoods to go to the other schools, had to drive out because there weren't a lot of people. But I thought it was a great idea to have the honking. And then to put together the graduation program that they had for the drive-through, just in a short period of time, they did an outstanding job, all the schools were great. I got to go to the three main high schools and see a little bit of all of them. And it was, the kids were just smiling. And I really believe we had more students graduate. I'd like to know what the count was than we normally would have coming to the graduation, because they just seemed like the cars were never ending and they decorated their cars, so cute. Some of the families had rented buses, basically, to bring the whole family to see the graduation, and they decorated all of them up, so it was, it was quite a sight. Also, I've been attending Saturday mornings with Robert and Mrs. Bradford, these little meetings that they have, the coffee hours. And it's really interesting, last week, we had a student's review of the COVID-19. And his mother is a volunteer in the district and she was with him. And then his older brother, she had, has four boys. The youngest one is in elementary school, fifth grade, going into the sixth grade middle school next year. The eighth grader, his older brother is an eighth grader, and then the other brother is a junior in high school, and then she has another one that's out of school. And all of them, the two boys, the youngest ones, gave comments and answered questions from everyone. And they were very well-versed in answering their questions. And they had thought about this, I think, a little bit, and their views on wanting to be back in school, not wanting to do distance learning, because they missed their friends, just seeing their faces and talking to them. They didn't have to necessarily hug them, but they were missing all of that. And the teachers, where they could actually ask the teacher a question and get the reaction from the teacher and have that one-on-one with the teacher as opposed to being online. So I hope that that's something that we take into consideration. I'm sure that the families have a lot to do with that. And that is all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on with trustee Radford.
Thank you, President Ortega. I've been thinking about the last two weeks since the killing of Floyd George and how I've seen and felt the people that we love and care about go through even more stress, heaped upon what already is present. It reminds me of how I felt as a young teen during the protests of the war in Vietnam, wondering how our country would manage to hold together. During all of this, however, our teachers and the schools have created a stable environments for their students with festive and happy moments for the families. I thought the drive-throughs were a success to the best of the school's abilities. I had a lot of fun, along with a few tears of such joyous moments and how precious the moments with the students were. I thought that the teachers and the staff really did a good job of making a few moments in the parking lot feel very personal. I went to the adult ed ceremony for one, and there was the graduation of a grandmother and a grandson at the same time. And, and as I was cheering on her family, she said to me, "It's also my birthday." So I yelled to everybody else down the line to join in and singing "Happy Birthday" to Rosa. So we really made it a festive occasion. I was glad to see that people are paying attention to our videos of encouragement that are on the district website. The last time I looked, mine had 873 views. And I had wondered if, I kind of worried about if what I had said was a downer that this year may be a classic example of how life can suck, but I decided that students would appreciate honesty rather than sugarcoating reality. So as trustee Garcia said, we've been having our webinars on Saturday mornings, and I appreciate that he has organized these with, with really good topics that are important for us as trustees to grow and learn. I've also been attending the webinars put on by the California School Board Association and the county one hosted by our county superintendent of schools, Dr. Judy White. Thank you very much, President Ortega.
Thank you, of course. And we'll share a few comments from, from the community. First and foremost, I would like to thank all the attendees that are logged in today. I know it's time for dinner, so hopefully you're enjoying that with your family and safety and health, obviously as a priority. And as well as my colleagues, I enjoyed a lot the virtual graduations and the drive-through graduations. We did get to see a lot of the generational impact that these students, whether, you know, whether, whatever age they are, are creating in their families. And like I always say, it ripples onto your community, whatever you do as an individual ripples onto your community. So I got to speak to some of, some of the students one-on-one when they were waiting in line. And I was asking them, what do they plan to go and do? And a lot of them, I was surprised, a lot of psychology, a lot of students that want to go into psychology. You know, I think, I think as a community collectively, we're waking up to certain realities. And, and certainly, you know, this last month, the month of May, has hit home for many of us with the death of George Floyd. And, you know, many people have taken it personal because it's a continuous. And I just wanted to publicly say my support with the movement. And more than, than anything now, it's a revolution of love and support for all colors and races in our, in our local and national levels as well. And in Mexico too, a lot of, a lot of what we see here is happening in Mexico too. So I think it's a global revolution of each, in every human being, you know, treating each other with, with respect and love and compassion for one another. So I'm in full support of that, and I'm happy to see that we as a district are also in support of that. And I just want to thank the students for keeping up with, with what they needed to do throughout, you know, these, these difficult times, improving, like I've mentioned in my videos, like proving to us that, you know, they set a whole definition, a whole new definition for what learning without limits means to them. And certainly in these, in these critical times, to teachers, all the teachers who really innovated and, and, you know, connected. And personally, I heard of some, you know, teachers even personally calling the parents and making sure that they connect with their studies, even though, you know, we're not forcing the students to turn in homework or assignments. We were still encouraging that. And all the staff as well, in the graduations, to all the principals and all the staff that were there. You know, I wanted to make sure that they also felt special for being there. And they're like, no, we have to do this. They all told me, no, there wasn't, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't many options when, when we got to, to have the okay in order for us to do the drive-through graduations. And, and like many of my board colleagues and the staff, I just felt so proud of our district for putting, putting that together. And a lot of the families went home and celebrated with party buses, with limos, with, you know, rented vehicles. And it really meant a lot for them. So I'm happy and proud of our district for being able to do that. And all of our staff who really were out in the, in the heat, in the, you know, in, in the trenches, like I like to say as well, for the benefit and the support of our students. And I'll leave my rest of my comments for later. Thank you all again for being here. And we'll move on to item three, public comment, public verbal comments.
We have several public comments this evening. The first is from Brenda Angulo. "I thank the board for their commitment to the Black Lives Matter movement. Our community awaits to see how JUSD will be putting policies and practices. My commitment was made long ago, but most recently, the turbulence of injustices I was faced with as a human rights activist and educator required a more disciplined commitment. Therefore, I participated in a vow of silence for seven days. While I was silent, I was not still. I participated in webinars, policy research, and book clubs. In fact, one of my book clubs was started at, was started by a JUS teacher, Martha Rodriguez from Sunny Slope Elementary, who read the responses through our Google meets chat as the other members verbally participated. While my silent protest is over, my commitment to human rights and equity will be ever-present. To personify this promise, I would like to use my platform as the NEHA Harupa Human Rights and Equity Chair to recognize Martha Rodriguez for her efforts towards justice by volunteering her time to create space for conversation regarding social justice issues. She invited a group of teachers to read an intentionally anti-racist book in Espanol, "Odio Que Das," otherwise known as "The Hate You Give." And we are currently on week seven, and I am sure that I commiserate with my compañeros that we are reaching el fin. So thank you, Martha, for your purposeful actions. Your students are lucky to have you. In addition to expressing my commitment to equity through our association, I would like to acknowledge my, acknowledge my administrator's consideration for the purpose of my involuntary reassignment. A drastic jump from kindergarten to fourth grade based on my strengths with restorative justice practices, research states, states, excuse me, that RJ practices, such as those that I have previously recommended to the board and to my administrator, support a pipeline to leadership. RJ practices intentionally shift the focus on what students should do, not focus on what they shouldn't be doing. Furthermore, these intentional remediations help alleviate the disproportionate rate at which students of color are suspended and expelled. Considering my investment towards equity, it is my most humble recommendation that the district create an equity team consisting of expert teachers who can provide assistance to teachers who are looking for support on implementing the district's promise toward being actively anti-racist. I know that I would appreciate an internal professional network that understood the importance of best practices for addressing our students post-COVID-19 and after a global condemnation of racism in the form of mass protesting. Once again, I thank you for your time and consideration." Next comment from Wendy Echols. "Greetings, trustees, Superintendent Duchan, and Cabinet. I hope that you are staying well. Again, I would like to say thank you for continuing to have conversations with the association as we've navigated these unprecedented times. It is more important than ever that we build and maintain our collaborative partnership as we embark upon planning for the reopening of schools, however that may look. I appreciate your willingness to share the feedback that you've received, and the association plans on doing the same. It is still my hope that you will consider a labor management think tank or work group that will include representatives from the multitude of impacted groups, including elementary and secondary, special education, counselors, guidance coordinators, nurses, et cetera, in addition to using federal, state, and county educational and public health guidelines. We need to look at several things moving forward. Number one, safety. Are we going to have provided PPEs, contact tracing, sanitizing stations, and a way to maintain proper physical distancing? Number two, multiple models and flexibility of school for staff and students. Number three, trauma-informed and wraparound services for staff and students. Number four, academics and interventions that will truly address the academic gaps for our students. Additionally, as if our charge isn't already big enough, we must also start focusing on cultural sensitivity in the wake of the murder of George Floyd. Our nation is a tipping point. It is imperative that we take a stance, that we look at unconscious and implicit bias, culturally relevant instructional material, materials, and, excuse me, but, and pedagogy and equity issues. This is a huge task that we must undertake. We need to take care of our staff and students. We need to be kind and patient. We need to provide grace and understanding. We need to listen to the myriad of concerns and needs of our school communities. We need to do this collaboratively. Once again, I share the African proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." I know that we can do this together. Thank you. Next comment is from Cheryl Ferguson, resource specialist at Sunny Slope Elementary School. "Good evening. I hope this finds you and your family safe and healthy. It has been an interesting and challenging year as we finish the 1920 school year. So many of us are already looking ahead to the 2021 school year. There is so much speculation on what the next school year will look like, and things are changing daily. One thing that has been mentioned are possible budget cuts for our school districts. Given that we aren't sure of the course of the next year, it is imperative that teachers are able to focus on the very important aspects of our jobs, the children. The budget that you approve will be a statement of values, and our central concern must be the students. I implore you to emphasize the needs of our district's children as you make any financial, as you make any financial decisions. Let our budget speak to our values, and let our financial decisions make clear that our children are our top priority. With all the changes that our students are going through, school is a stable environment for many of them. That being said, it is critical that the teachers have the resources they need to provide as much academic and socially emotional support possible. As educators, we need to focus on the basic curriculum to ensure our children are not falling behind due to the ongoing pandemic. And to remediate the skills many of them may have missed learning during this crisis. While we will need to build on the curriculum required for each grade, our main focus needs to be on ensuring our children fall no further behind based on the coronavirus crisis. The other crucial aspect of having children come back to school is offering them the social, emotional support that so many of them need." them the social emotional support that so many of them need on a daily basis. While we have done much through Mr. Campos's office and our PICO program, we need counselors available at our school site on a daily basis now more than ever. So many of our kids' needs must be dealt with on an immediate basis, and we simply do not have enough qualified staff members to provide those needs. It is vital that our children be given the best chance to learn and develop, and that we dedicate ourselves, meeting those needs. Teachers cannot provide with onsite counselors who are available every day to serve the needs of our students. Our teachers are well prepared to handle the task ahead, and any funding allocated to training or standardized testing will take resources away from what matters the most, allowing teachers to teach and giving students the room to learn. As we face uncertain times ahead, I would respectfully request that you consider focusing our budget on providing the rigorous curriculum that we have been trained to teach while meeting the social emotional needs of the students of JUSD. Thank you for your time and consideration of these urgent matters. Next comment is from Maria Martinez Sabayos. As a member of the book club, I would like to thank Mrs. Martha Rodriguez for leading the club. The book, El Odio Que Das, has allowed teachers to discuss a topic that needs to be discussed. Mrs. Rodriguez not only leads the sessions, but she also provides book club members with strategies, resources, and an opportunity to create questions that guide the members to reflect on their personal experiences and emphasize with others. Next comment is from Colin Markovich. Good evening, Superintendent Duchan and members of the board. I hope you are doing well. This is Colin Markovich, Schedule, Representative for the Office of Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes. The Assembly Member would like to congratulate the class of 2020 on its graduation and wishes them the best in their future endeavors. I wanted to provide the board with a legislative update. The legislature is in the process of approving the state's budget, which must be approved by June 15th. While COVID-19 has had a significant impact on the state's budget, Assembly Member Cervantes is working to ensure that Haruba Valley receives our fair share of funding. If nothing else, the COVID-19 pandemic has also shown the importance of disaster preparedness and planning. That is part of the reason why Assembly Member Cervantes has introduced AB 2730. This legislation would ensure that counties and cities benefit from sharing resources to meet evacuation needs during declared emergencies and disasters. During disasters, those who are most at risk are the elderly, those with disabilities and low-income individuals. This legislation would ensure that access and functional needs populations are given consideration in emergency situations, such as the multiple fires in Haruba Valley in 2019. Locally, our office continues to provide casework assistance, including to people who have applied for unemployment with the Employment Development Department. If you are aware of anyone who needs assistance with accessing their benefits from EDD, we encourage them to contact our office where we can be of service. That concludes the public verbal comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to item four, A.
Yes, I have a brief report, Madam President.
Thank you.
I would like to update the board in public as well, what our plans are, at least at this point regarding opening a school in COVID-19. As you know, things change daily. On Friday afternoon, we received guidance from the California Department of Public Health regarding opening the schools. And this morning, we received very similar guidance in a much more elaborate document from the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. In it, were included many models of instruction, as well as guidelines for social distancing in classrooms, on buses, and throughout our campuses. The hard part, of course, is that social distancing and children generally don't go very well together. So we are making plans to do our best in providing both options for children and parents, ranging from a full distance learning curriculum to what will probably be some blend of in-classroom and distance learning. Of course, we would all, the best, hope that the best situation would be to open schools entirely, but that, as you know, couldn't happen with social distancing. We basically would be constrained to somewhere between 15 and maybe 18 students per classroom and about 16 students on a bus. So we're looking at those changes. We have, particularly, we are in the process of actually putting together a stakeholders input committee that includes our associations, the public, parents, and our board that would inform the board of decision-making to come. One thing that we really do want to be careful of is not to ask people questions where there is no choice. So for example, while everybody, not everybody, certainly a number of people would love to have all the children come to school on August 6, that probably is just not doable, given the requirements of social distancing from the State Superintendent, the California Department of Health, and even existing ones with the County Health Department. So we are working diligently, trying to bring as many stakeholders as we can, also providing professional development for our teachers. I just want to thank, as we end the school year, our teachers for just a remarkable job of turning on a dime from classroom instruction to online instruction. Since we are, it's almost for certain, there will be some type of online instruction, and we may actually have to toggle back and forth in the fall. I think we are much better prepared than we were in March. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to public hearing. Item one, Ms. Dr. Hanson.
The purpose of this public hearing is to receive input on a proposed easement conveyance to Harupa Community Services District at Indian Hills Elementary School that will be used by JCSD to construct and maintain a water pressure reducing apparatus. So President Sylvia Ortega should formally open and close the public hearing on resolution number 2020/35, authorization to convey easement to Harupa Community Services District at Indian Hills Elementary.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing session on the intent to convey easement to Harupa Community Services District at Indian Hills Elementary School. Are there any comments from the public? I see Lisa Cole with her raised hand.
Dr. Hanson, did you receive any public verbal comments on the hearing?
No, we did not.
Thank you.
And if, if they want to talk right now, they can?
If there are, I believe, Ms.
Or I saw a raised hand, but now I don't see it.
Attendees are not able to speak during the live meeting. All comments would have been submitted through the public comments link.
For the, for the hearing, okay. So seeing no comments, this public hearing session is now formally closed. I would like to invite the board members to refresh their screens. And we'll need a motion.
Trustee Garcia does have his hand up.
Can we unmute? Just to make sure he is making the motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, item A, approve and adopt routine actions by consent.
Thank you, trustee Garcia. Trustee Charlie?
I second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Call for the vote, sorry. Items pass five zero. Thank you. And we'll move on to item eight B, Mr. Dubraski.
Thank you. The Agricultural Career Technical Education Incentive Grant provides local education agencies with funds to improve the quality of their ag programs. The district will be applying for the maximum funding available, as we do every year. This year it is $7,104 for Harupa Valley and $10,636 for Rubito High School. Administration recommends the board approve the submission of the 2020-2021 Agricultural Career Technical Education Incentive Grant application.
Thank you. Trustee Linda Charn?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Regal?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Radford, Radford, sorry?
Thank you. I was just going to either make the motion or second it.
Okay, thank you. Now we have trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Mr. Dubraski and his team for continuing submission of these grants for agriculture programs throughout the district. So, thank you, Dave.
On behalf of those that actually did the work, I will relay that on.
Thank you so much. And we'll call for the vote. Item passes five zero. Item C, Dr. Hanson.
On May 11, 2020, the Board adopted resolution number 200 slash four, authorizing the intent to convey a permanent easement to Harupa Community Services District at Indian Hills Elementary. In this public session, qualified subjects, as authorized by code 17559, Board may consider and adopt resolution number 2020/35 to authorize conveyance of the proposed JCSD slash Community Services District.
I think we lost Dr. Hanson.
I think he was completed. He was getting, I think, breaking up a little bit. So do you need him to repeat it, or you do have two hands up?
Okay, let's see. Trustee Bradford?
I'd like to move to approve the conveyance.
Thank you. Trustee Charn?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments, even though Dr. Hanson is not here?
I'm here. I was just muted. Sorry. Thank you for those votes.
Thank you. Anything, anything else you wanted to say, Dr. Hanson?
No, I think you covered it. So just needed the motion and now can call for vote.
Thank you so much. We have a first and a second. We'll call for the vote. Item passes five zero. Move on to item D one, Mr. Brooks.
Yes, thank you, President Ortega. Since renewing its contract with First Five Riverside, which included an increase in reimbursement funds for behavioral health services, the district has expanded behavioral and mental health service supports for our students. Additionally, recent referrals to the district's behavioral health programs have increased significantly during this crisis for the past several months. Due to this increased demand, administration is recommending that the board approve of establishing the position of behavioral health clinical supervisor. Under the direction of the Director of Parent Involvement and Community Outreach, this position will be responsible for the overall administration and supervision of the district's behavioral health program, and will provide direct therapeutic services to Harupa's students. Administration recommends establishing this classified management position at range 10 of the Management Leadership Team Classified Employee Salary Schedule and funding for this position, it's important to note, will be through restricted funds that are provided by the district's contract with First Five Riverside that I mentioned a moment ago. So at this time, administration is recommending that the board approve of this job description and establishing the classification of behavioral health clinical supervisor, as well as placing the salary for this classification on range 10 of the Management Leadership Team Classified Employee Salary Schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Charn?
Yes, I think this is a great time to be opening this situation up, considering what we've been going through, and the, the whole situation was a COVID. I think it's going to be helpful for those people because I think our, the caseload is probably going to enlarge, double in size. And so I moved to approve this motion.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford?
I fully, I second the motion by fully supporting what we do to promote the mental health of both our students and the, the environment on the campus that helps them be free to say they need that kind of health. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second. Do we have any comments or questions? And I see trustee Regal.
Thanks, President Ortega. Just a couple of questions to clarify. Daniel, these funds are from First Five. Daniel, these funds are from First Five or were reimbursed. Is there any concern if budgets are cut with First Five and we won't have these funds available?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, when we, when we look at the economic situation around us, that, that's a reasonable concern. With this particular stream of funding, it has remained not just constant, actually, it's increased significantly in the last few months. The need for this sort of service has increased so, so substantially that we really are, are facing almost a demand from, from First Five that we expand our ability to meet these needs and then to receive those reimbursement funds. And this position really would, would facilitate being able to do that.
Okay, and I think as a trustee Bradford had mentioned in charge that we really are going to need these services just due to the economic state and, and this health crisis that's out there. Are we, is this going to be enough support for Mr. Campos's department to be able to accommodate the number, the influx that we're expecting?
We expect that it, that it will be at this point. Um, you know, we'll continue to evaluate that going forward. You know, as I, as I'm sure you noticed in the personnel report tonight, we also brought forward for approval, the appointment of several behavioral health therapists will be working in this department. That was a job classification that we added back in April. We're grateful for that. And this position really expands our ability to coordinate those, all of the efforts of all of those behavioral health therapists and, um, and then can also provide direct therapy to the, to those students. We'll continue to evaluate it.
Okay, perfect. I would look forward to seeing an update just on what is happening in our district with Mr. Compass Department, just so that we can kind of get a feel for it and to have a little eye opener to, you know, what, what we're seeing in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Charlie.
Yes, Daniel. Mr. Brooks, I have a question. With the First Five program. Helping with this, what is our breakdown of, uh, clinical health, behavioral, health, clinical assistance at the sites? Like, are there one per three elementarys or one in each high school and middle school? Or do we have that, or is that something that will be changed?
Yeah, no, actually, we, we provide the support from a, from a central hub in the Pico Department. And then we, we have historically been providing that support through interns.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we deploy those based on the need and the, and the request that goes through, you know, site staff and site administrators who are able to reach out on behalf of their students who have those needs. And then, uh, you know, with, with our addition of the behavioral health therapists tonight, and then this behavioral clinic, health clinical supervisor will be able to continue to respond to those on an as needed basis.
Well, I know when First Five first came into our district, I was at Einherbach working there. So we've had them a long time because I've been retired now for nine years. And it was just a godsend for the parents because they helped with so many things. And I think they have continued to increase their help. It was just, when they were kicking it off in Riverside, it was great. Now we're just a mainstay in our district for us. So I thank them a lot and I'm thankful that, uh, that they're going to be continuing and asking us to increase, which goes to show what our situation in the world is today. Thank you.
Thank you. We have trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to thank you, trustee Chad, for providing the firsthand, firsthand experience and bringing that to the board. But I really just wanted to thank Mr. Brooks and all those involved with bringing this forward. In our Saturday meetings that we've had with the county board members or board members in Riverside County, mental health and these types of issues have been like number one topic every week. And we had, uh, Mr. Jose Campos join us a few weeks ago with, with his team in a presentation and, uh, which was very well received. And I just wanted to make a comment to say that, um, glad we're moving forward, continuing with these programs. And, uh, and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. We'll move on. To call for the vote. Item passes five zero. Item D two, Mr. Brooks.
So in, in some ways, this will sound familiar through a, a similar agreement with First Five Riverside. Specifically, their Children and Families Commission, the district has received restricted grant funds for home-based programs for children all age zero to five that work to decrease behavior disorders and foster success for all of our students in school and life. Although similar support has been provided to children and families through the Parent Involvement and Community Outreach Department for several years, we have been expanding these efforts and at this time it requires a new job classification, the Assistant Parent Engagement Coordinator, to provide additional supervision and management of the increased home-based programs. The Assistant Parent Engagement Coordinator will be responsible for providing management, planning, implementation, coordination, evaluation, and supervision of the expanded home-based programs under the direction of the Parent Engagement Coordinator. Administration recommends establishing this classified management position at range one of the Management Leadership Team Classified Employee Salary Schedule. And again, this position will be funded through Riverside University Health Systems and First Five Riverside Restricted Grant Funds. So at this time, administration recommends that the board approve the job description and establish the classification of Assistant Parent Engagement Coordinator and placing this position, this classification on range one of the Management Leadership Team Classified Employee Salary Schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. We have trustee Charlie.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Regal.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or questions? Seeing none, we'll move further. Item passes five zero. And on to our final. Item, Board Member Committee Reports, if any, and we can start with trustee Bradford.
All right, I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I have not had any committee meetings to report, so instead I'd like to take the time to say thank you to our student board members who weren't here but who provided us so much insight about their, their student bodies and, and their campuses throughout the, the year. I'd like to thank administration teachers and classified staff for taking such excellent care of, of our children's. And I, and I struggle, like, I trained myself to sit at students, but the mother in me still wants to say, our children's care and attention through them, them being scared and uncertain and worried about them, themselves and their families and what's going to happen to them. I'd like to thank our IT department that nearly overnight became a critical hub of activity to keep materials going for the teachers. And also for Angels in Aprons, the food staff who prepared what I heard were a million plus meals. Is that correct Superintendent Duchon?
I think I had the number a little exaggerated, but close to that.
Oh, all right. Well, it's more than what I would have, the, the ability to cook, but I, I drove past a couple of those sites one day, just, just to thank the staff and say, you know, they're providing a sense of normalcy and, and the food that, that our children need. So I, I want to say again, these are our frontline soldiers showing that JUSD heroes come in so many forms. Thank you to the teachers and, and helping their students survive and, and be resilient. Thank you, President Ortega.
Of course, thank you. And we have trustee Charlie.
Yes, thank you, President Ortega. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone in the district for everything they've done through this COVID since March night, March, when we had to basically stop the world as far as our students go and take a step back and recreate how they were going to learn, how they were going to live for the next few months, including the teachers. And I know that was a big job for the teachers, having a son that's a teacher, having a daughter who's a teacher in another district. Our district, in comparison, our district was so much ahead of her district and others around us and people I talked to, we had it down. As soon as everything has started happening, we went right into the go mode. And I mean, teachers got on, my granddaughters had so many, so much homework, they didn't know what to do with it. I mean, they were, actually felt like they were in school. My youngest one, my youngest granddaughter in kindergarten was probably the one that suffered the most. She missed all of her friends so much and it was very difficult to talk to them where the others are old enough to talk on an iPhone and can talk visibly, visually with them. But, um, the teachers, some of the teachers were really good about getting the students together and getting them on a Zoom format where they could see each other and talk back and forth. They also, the teachers were doing one on one with some of the students or maybe five or six students and she would take them and work on, on a part of their teaching for them. There were teachers who had things, had to rearrange their schedules to work around student schedules. I know I heard that from some of them and they were just fantastic. Our technology department, to keep it going and get it out to everyone possible is just amazing. Listening to one of the CSBA coffee hours and I asked that he, um, they were from Valverde School District and I said, in comparison, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with our school district. Where do we compare to what you're talking about where they wanted, meaning, having to reach out to a lot of students and didn't have the resources to be able to get their hot wifi out to them? He said, oh, you guys are in great shape with your technology staff, Josh, and everyone there, they are, you guys you're well, well set up for, um, distance learning. So I want to thank them, thank Mike Binham for organizing our food services and getting, keeping those people there every, that has got to be so difficult. And they are just, like Mrs. Bradford said, angels in aprons to get the food out to these families. And I don't know if we're going to be able to do it in the summer, but I hope that we will be able to help with some of the food. Because I know that with families not working, this is going to be a big problem for some of them that normally would not be enjoying the food during the summer from our district, but they are going, going to need it now. Principals, you were great for your graduations. They were all there. They spent every day in their hot robes, standing there, their, their graduation gowns. Congratulating the students with a smile on their face. And I don't know if it attributes to that they're good and gone, or that they were just happy to see them again. And I think that was it. They just were happy to see those students. They'd missed them for so long. And the students were so happy. Some of them wanted to hug their teachers and which they were trying not to do and their principals. So, the parents were just thrilled. The parents just, I think, were just overwhelmed with everything and they were upset that we weren't going to have a graduation. And we've got that permission to go ahead and do the drive-through. I talked to so many parents and they said, oh, thank you, thank you. They just, and you can see it on Facebook and all that. So many of them came in immediately and said, thank you for allowing our kids to have a graduation. Some schools weren't able to do that and we were. And congratulations to the class of 2020. I know that you are going to go far and you are going to be the full force in how our world changes from here on out. Whether you think you are or not, you will find out that you will be a changing force. I remember, like Mrs. Bradford said, back when, uh, they were protesting the war, it seems like we're back in that era again and excepted just a different issue. So we'll get through it and, and we're a family out here. Harupa is a family. Harupa is a team. And I am proud to say that I'm a board member and a resident of this area and an alumni, and I appreciate everything that everyone has done, families, parents, the community even. I saw community signs everywhere for our graduates. So thank you very much. And I hope everyone has a nice summer. Be able to get out a little bit and do some traveling or just enjoy families, hopefully, at least your families in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. And first I'd like to thank trustee Bradford and trustee Chad for acknowledging our Saturday meeting. And I think we had opportunity to, to hear from a student's voice this past Saturday. And I think that was very enlightening for us. And I think in the future, we're also looking at maybe a few weeks from now, maybe three or four weeks from now, getting, um, uh, teachers' perspective as well, some teachers to join us from throughout Riverside County to kind of, so they can kind of give us an idea of, of the challenges they're facing. So that's all good. And then I want to mention the videos from all the trustees that were excellent. And I think if you watch those, I mean, you can see that we, we all spoke from the heart and I, you know, we really care about our students in this district. And if you haven't seen them, I advise you to go to the, to the website or to the Facebook and, and check those out. And also wanted to kind of touch on the George Floyd statement that the district put out and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I really just kind of wanted to, to just kind of last part of it. You know, we commit ourselves to do our parts in not only preventing any act of injustice stained with racism, but to actively uphold the rights of each and every one of our students to learn without limits in schools free of racism and prejudice. We stand for justice for all. I can tell you, um, in serving with my colleagues here over the past few years, that we are all committed to that. And that we all serve with that unity of purpose that, you know, every child must, uh, there should be equity in, in the learning of every child. So I want to thank the board for that. And I want to thank all the public commenters, especially, I know some of them mentioned the work of, uh, Ms. Martha Rodriguez. I meet her. She's a fantastic woman and I'm glad to see that she has put together this book club and is, uh, you know, going above and beyond with her students. Also want to thank Assemblymember Cervantes. Thank you, Colin, for, for those comments today. And I want to thank, uh, Assemblymember Cervantes for, for, for ensuring that, that we get our fair share in AB twenty seven thirty. I looked it up while we were having this meeting and I, I think it's great. And I think it's also, uh, important that we all can continue to communicate with our legislators so that they understand the challenges the school districts are going through. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Michael Rourke. I know it's challenging to hold these meetings. I know I've been a host of some of these meetings and you got to keep an eye on who's in, who's out, unmute, mute. And so I want to thank you, uh, for your service tonight, sir. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Ortega. Um, I do not have any committee meetings since they've been on hold for a little while. But Elliot, I do want to say that if we do develop a committee for planning out the next school year, whether it's online or, or excuse me, a distance, I would love to join that committee if possible. I do want to express and say congratulations to our class of 2020. You are definitely unique, never had graduations like that. And we celebrated you twice. So it just meant so much more to see that we can really do something in person for you. But I'm excited for what you all decide to do and as you become adults and enter a new world. And I know that there's going to be many of you that will potentially have a huge impact and change our future for the better. So I look forward to seeing those results. You know, I know that we always talk about the seniors, but I, I do want to give a shout out to our middle school students that have completed eighth grade and are jumping into high school. So I wish you the best of luck. Ignore those butterflies. Don't worry about them. They'll go away after a couple of days. But high school is a great experience and I look forward to all of you starting on a new campus and heading out into finishing your last four years of school. And of course, elementary school. Uh, we have sixth graders that are starting middle school. So a new transition and, and excitements and, and the mystery of what they want to really focus on and head into their studies. So congratulations to those graduates. So congratulations to those graduates as well. And, and the cafeteria teams, I mean, they, it's not quite a million, but definitely a lot of effort. And I, I just can't express how much it means to the board that you get out there and do this every day. It's, but it's taking care of our students, so I know it's in your heart to do it. And, you know, I also just want to make sure that the teachers know that we really value for the curveballs that we've been thrown and you all had remained dedicated. We know that there was frustrations, we're not going to deny that, but you stuck it out and really wanted to work with your students. So I want to thank you for that time of, of trying to work remotely, learning the new digital system of education and then still finishing off the year. So thank you all for your time. That is all I have right now. I just wish you all a great summer.
Thank you. And I too don't have any committee reports, but I do have final comments. I do also want to thank our student board members. I saw a few of them on our virtual graduation videos that I wanted to see them and say bye to them formally in the drive-through graduations, but I didn't get to do that. So we thank you so much for your service and leadership as students and representing your body, your class of 2020. And you truly always inspire me to, to give my best with, with what we have so far. Also, I see that we still have about 25 attendees. We thank you so much. Like what I tell students, you are my, you are my accountability partner. And I also say to the public, you are my accountability partner. And I think like Ms. Wendy Echols mentioned, we, we will, we will get through this in collaboration and in partnership together, I think. We, we can't do this alone and I think no other district can do it alone. And so we're listening and we are being held accountable for, for what we're doing. And, and I like to say that, that I, I vow again to, to be the voice for the voiceless and stand up for those who can't stand up. So I thank you all for being here. I do have a couple of events that I, that I attended through association, my other associations from California Association Bilingual Education. We had virtual celebrations too, because we couldn't hold them in the convention center this year. So we held those and we invited a couple of people in education. Also Sabrina Cervantes called in and it was really special because her mom is, is a bilingual teacher. So she always shares her personal story on that and the students and the family and, and you know, school administrators got to hear that. Also, Dr. White surprises us all with a speech in Spanish. And that's always nice to, to, to hear. And for California Latino School Boards Association, we also held our first webinar. So we, we were going to do summits, but ended up doing a webinar series called Cafe con CLSBA. And as well, I'm very proud that throughout the state of California, the superintendent that got invited was our Riverside County Superintendent, Dr. White. And she spoke very high on her also personal experience of ethnic studies and how important that is. And so we'll hear more from, from that in future webinars that California Latino School Boards Association will have. And another comment from the public was how the teacher Martha Rodriguez got a lot of her colleagues together for a book club called El Oído Que Da. So in, in translation, it's the year that you give. So right now we are being invited to, to not speak so much, but just to listen, to really listen to, to the needs of our communities and those that have been marginalized for, for a long time. And I think I recommit myself to, to do that. And, and I'm very proud of our teachers for stepping up and, and showing, you know, showing other, other communities as well that in collaboration, we can, we can go so far. And I think that's it for now. Again, thank you all so much for, for attending and all of our staff and our cabinet, our superintendent. Thank you all for, for sticking through and, you know, and giving the best that we could to our, to our students this, this year. And all of you have a safe and healthy summer. Any final comments, Mr. Duchon?
Um, yeah, actually just a couple. I, Martha Rodriguez, as you probably remember, was our Teacher of the Year and County Teacher of the Year. So I am not surprised she's doing great things. I do want to mention a lot of the unseen, unsung staff that helped us through this crisis. Everybody got paid. Some of those records were all done remotely. So our payroll staff worked remotely, our bills were paid remotely, our utilities were kept on remotely. And so many, many, many people who kind of sat there in silence and worked the computers at, at home, kept this district going. It was really quite remarkable. Our teachers did a remarkable job. And I want to thank our principals also. Our principals just did an amazing job of keeping their schools together as much as a school can be together remotely and keeping that sense of community. And, and finally, while I want to say we've done a lot in the area of equity, there's a lot more to go. I think one of the things that's been pointed out is just how horrible implicit bias is and that we all need to be aware of when and where that exists and, and how that affects people sometimes even more deeply than when it's explicit. So there's much work to do on all fronts. And President Ortega, I liked your comments about sometimes we need the difficulty to come up with great things. And, and I think out of this year, there will be great things. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to, to end with also thanking Denise. I think Elliot, Mr. Duchon, is this her final meeting with us? Denise?
She will be with one more meeting, I believe.
Okay.
July 6th is her last day, July 7th.
Okay, so we can wait a couple more board meetings to give our farewells. Thank you so much. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.